Welcome to the Wednesday, September 10th, 2025 Pembroke Select Board Meeting. Please join us in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings LS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Thank you. Announcements, do we have any announcements to share today?
Go for it. That's a good one.
I was going to do that under the town manager report, but I'm happy to let the board and the residents know that they will be receiving in the mail, a new mailer that cites the town's aggregation plan. I know the board is aware because we talked about it when we bid it, but our residential rates are going from fourteen seven fifty cents per kilowatt to thirteen nine 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 cents per kilowatt. And the optional green and the commercial ones are also going down. So, good news for all of us. Just you'll be receiving this in the mail. It's going to be like postcard form. Check it out and just be happy the rates are going down and not up.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do I mention it's automatic?
Oh, yeah. So, if you're already receiving your electricity through the aggregation supply, it will automatically roll over you. There's no action required for residents. If you're not getting it, I strongly recommend you can look at your supply rates on your bills and sign up for it because it's more than likely less expensive than what you're currently paying.
Thank you. I also wanted to share a reminder that Public Safety Day is on September 28th from 10:00 to 1:00 at the community center. And actually, before we moved on, I just wanted to ask if we could have a moment of silence. We lost, Charlie Kirk actually passed away earlier this afternoon, very terribly, before we continued. We have a scheduled appointment with Somewhere Else Tavern for an outdoor live entertainment permit noise complaint with a possible vote to amend or change license terms, possible vote to set public hearing date to suspend or revoke permit of October 8th. Did you want to come up in?
Good evening.
Hi, could you just identify yourself?
My name is John Danahue. I'm the attorney for Jason and Lori Cook for Somewhere Else Tavern. Good evening. As far as the update goes, I'm not really sure. I understood that there were some readings taken this weekend. My understanding from the clients were that they were within range and seemed reasonable. That's my understanding. I think select member Keegan was there. Was there, is what I understood. So, that's what I'm hearing on my end, but I certainly would like to hear from what the town had heard from there, right? Because I wasn't there.
So, we left off, we had a special meeting last week, just to keep everybody on the same page, where we discussed noise complaints and what we hear as well, of course. And the end result of that was there were no changes made to the permitting, but Lori and Jason were going to go back and try to work out creating a lesser decimal reading on the noise levels. And during that timeframe on Saturday, our deputy chief and our zoning enforcement officer were going to go out and check the decimal readings to see how that was going.
I think they were supposed to do it in conjunction. I just wanted to make sure with the manager, Mike, to make sure that the
And Mike was going to pick him up as well.
The equipment that he was using was calibrated in sense with what the, I think, the zoning enforcement officer and maybe the police, I'm not sure if it was deputy
Deputy chief.
Was there because he was using his phone. And I think that was one thing I wanted to make sure that they were on the same page with the numbers and decibels. They could have been off, and if they're off, then at least we know the variation between the two. That's all.
Okay. And then Sean, I know you had gone by.
Right. So, Mike wasn't there. Jason?
Jason's the owner.
And the deputy chief and myself. That's all. That's all that was there. And we did use their decimal reader. We went over, the deputy chief and I went over and did the readings, and they were low. They were sixty to sixty-two, which was great. It didn't sound loud. It was, I mean, they could still hear it, but I think that's going to happen no matter what we do. My problem is, as soon as I left, the deputy chief got a call from Mr. Goki saying that it had been turned up. And she went back and she said it was considerably louder after we left. She said it wasn't as loud as the weekend before, but it was considerably louder after we did our stuff and left, which
And just for the record, there was a huge interlude of downpour. Do you recall Saturday night? Thunderstorms, crazy rain. So, there was a break in there. You guys were out in that rain.
Yes, we were.
And then the music stopped. Could have been in between sets, whatever. But the point is, keeping in mind that the pouring rain may have been part of the impact or could have just been the end of the first set.
Well, you were there.
You went home. And I was going to say, sorry, I just wanted to throw that in for context.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When we went over, they were doing their set. Afterwards, after the rain, they ended up actually not using their PA system because it got fried in the water. And they were using a megaphone for the amplifiers for the guitars and everything worked, but not the mic. So, they used a PA megaphone. And it was, they turned it up. It was definitely louder. And that's not just me. That's Mr. Goki, that's the deputy chief. It was louder.
I'm confused. I'm just trying to, so initially you went over there, they did the readings, music was being performed before the storm. Everything was compliant, or at least was tolerable and not, then you went back again?
It was the lowest it had been so far.
And then afterwards, that's when they were using the
The problem is, I gave back their decimal reader, so I don't have an actual number of what it was up to, but it was noticeably loud.
So, Mike was supposed to originally have been there as well, and he wasn't present.
He was not there.
All right. So, maybe it would help if I read what Wendy Lapierre, our deputy chief, sent to us. She said she met with Sean Keegan at Somewhere Else Tavern at 7:30 on Saturday night. I know there was also music on Friday, even though they had said there was not a plan for that, but
How do you know there's music on Friday? Did they
Because I was sent audio clip.
I
I mean, they can have it. They're permitted to, but it was just, they went on Saturday to do the decibels.
Okay.
Shortly after it began pouring rain and we were soaked, so we departed. At about 9:00 PM, I was contacted by the complainant next door. The music was noticeably louder than it had been earlier in the evening, though not as loud as the previous weekend. I did send audio from that time to Mr. Keegan, and she did actually send it to me as well. Earlier in the evening, Jason Cook, who's the owner, shared with Mr. Keegan and I that there was an issue with the band the night before, which I guess was that Friday. I will provide the details of that situation, so I don't know what that was about, but
He said that they weren't playing loud and they kept telling him to turn it down.
They weren't listening, is what he said.
From, Mr. Cook said they wouldn't listen, so he sent them home. Mr. Goki said they played right until 9:30, so I don't know what to tell you on that. I was not there.
So, did Mr. Cook?
Mr. Cook said that they would not turn, the band wouldn't listen to them, so he unplugged them and sent them home. That is, that's what he told me.
Okay.
Can you confirm that with us?
I can't because I
No, I mean at a later date.
Yes, I will.
All right.
Because what I heard this morning, and I apologize because I normally like to know what I'm walking into, because my understanding was the first inspection.
Yes.
I was not aware of anything afterwards, including you talking to Mr. Cook either, and I apologize. I will find out exactly about the band and the music and the timing. I will do that.
If I could point out just one more thing. Their original application, Mr. Cook actually suggested we use the, because we don't have our own bylaw for this. The nearest one that had a sound ordinance was Bridgewater, and they suggested we use that. That, in their application, said from nine, seven to nine, no more than sixty-five decibels, and from nine to ten, no more than sixty.
Right.
That's what they suggested, and they haven't been doing that.
During your, I did see the letter that was posted by whatever Pembroke group talked about. My understanding was that was part, yeah, there's a letter that was, Pembroke United? Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, they're Facebook.
So, they posted
It's not a government.
I didn't say that. I said, but there was a, Facebook is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Because clearly, they've been paying attention to this because they suggested that I had said it was commercial property. It's not. It's business property. It's in a business district.
Business district.
But what I'm saying is what they posted, I thought was for, was that a part of their application for the entertainment license or for the zoning? Because my understanding was the zoning.
It was their
I didn't see what they posted.
I went online to see. I thought it was their application.
I think for their zoning is what it was. And I agree because I read what they submitted from their sound engineer. What they, I think represented to the zoning board was that this is what they're going to keep it within the limits. That was Bridgewater?
Bridgewater.
I think Bridgewater is what they referenced. I don't think they used that as a part of their application. I wasn't here for their application. You folks know better than I. But as a part of their application here. But I did see that this morning too, and I thought, okay, what are the limits? And I think they had it in the sixties. And what I was trying to figure out was what were the numbers from Saturday that you guys had read?
The official reading I took was sixty-two, and it was fine. But then we're told that it was significantly louder after we left.
The only reason why I'm asking is, were they at the various spots? Was this at the spot with the Gokis, which was the eighty yards?
We went to the corner of the Goki's house where we had gone before and took the reading.
Okay.
And the first readings were done in their backyard?
Correct.
Yeah. Was this in their backyard?
Yes.
And the only reason I ask is because I was hoping the police would also take whatever the deputy did on there, so you could calibrate the two. Because if the police go back and they say it's at eighty-five or sixty-three or whatever it may be, if we know that maybe the calibration is within a degree of maybe forty, or maybe they were right on, spot on. I don't know. That was my hope. So, at least we could do it.
I'm not sure if they had access to the resident's property at that time.
I think they did because that's what he's saying he got the sixty-two from.
But I mean after, when they went back, when the complaint came in. I don't know if that was
And I, I agree with you on that. I'm not sure.
I mean, I don't know.
What I was thinking was the points that they were taking all the readings from, at least then we could calibrate
Right, right.
The noise. Because if it's the same here, here, here
Of course.
And they're off by deviation of, say, five points or ten points or fifteen, then it's going to be the same at the Gokis if they're not on. That's all I was trying to figure out.
I understand.
And that goes to your point, Mr. Flynn, you know, like, what's, I need to produce that stuff. I got to get that to you. So, I'm sorry that that happened.
I'm just looking for a straight answer on that.
Yeah. You want to know whether it shut down, when it was shut down specifically?
Either it was shut down or it was not.
And that was on that Friday night.
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, I feel like we need to offer some sort of relief to this resident. I understand your last concern was if we suspend the permit, then how do they try to fix what the problem is? And I understand that, but like, this is weekend after weekend after weekend that this has been going on. And it's just not fair for them to have to sit through it until 9:30 at night, Friday and Saturday, while they do try to figure things out. So, I, my suggestion would be if we were going to make any changes to the permit, we make it so that it has to at least end earlier in the meantime while we schedule, do we want to schedule a public hearing? I think that might be the route we're going.
We're going to have to because we, on Thursday, since you weren't here, Dan, Mr. Cook was saying, there's Jason right there, excellent, that his crowd comes in a little bit later. So, because of that, it might be not conducive either and might not help.
Well
So, I mean, yeah, I want to give relief to everyone around there, but it's, just trying to think, what is the fair option? But public hearing is probably going to have to happen.
Does anyone have any other thoughts, comments?
It's kind of hard for them to adhere to anything when there's no specific settings for them to adhere to. We're just saying, keep it down. And that might be one thing to them and one thing to us. And it makes it hard for anybody to adhere to anything.
I found what you were referring to. And it was in their application to the zoning board. It's a separate fly-up from Denubio Consulting.
That's okay.
That is actually entitled, they were, the civil engineer did the work. It's actually entitled "Volume Management Plan." And in the bullets, you get down to bullet number three, which points out our lack of hertz
Right.
Decibels.
Decibels.
Hertz. And refers to Bridgewater. And then indicates sixty and sixty-five. Sixty-five prior to nine and sixty between nine AM, 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. That's where it is.
But also, even if we use that, where is that reading being taken?
According to the proposed new bylaw from the bylaw review committee at the property line.
At the property line?
Yeah.
Which is, that's basically where the tent is, right? I mean
What is it, eighty feet?
Yeah.
No, 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 that's from the house.
From the
That fence is the property line.
Probably be like, maybe like ten feet, because the stage is right next to barely, maybe say fifteen feet tops. So, now the question is where on the property line are you taking, measuring from the street?
The property line is the line, but
Well, the property line goes all the way around, including the street. You're going to box. So, you could be the farthest point away, or you could be the closest point. That's the question, is what I'm trying to suggest.
I have a feeling where this is a preview of the town meeting argument.
That's a, good for the town, but not for neither the Gokis or for my client.
Right, right.
Well, that probably needs to be tightened up then, the language at least. I believe that will be addressed at the fall town meeting. We can't really rely on that right now. Does anybody else have anything, Rich?
I think out of fairness, all parties should be here who are going to have the action taken. I'd probably lean towards public
Well, I think we need to have, I believe we need to have a public hearing anyway, but I mean, we need ten days to have a public hearing, which brings us to October 8th. So, that means we wouldn't be able to do anything again until October 8th. I'm looking to do something from now until October 8th to alleviate the situation until we can have a public hearing and make a final decision.
Do you have any suggestions?
I think we should change the time so that it's not running until 9:30 at night. So, while they try to figure out their music adjustments and, you know, what works and what doesn't work, there's just no reason at this point, I feel like, for this family to have to listen to it till 9:30 at night. I would just change the times to make it earlier.
Could we start out earlier?
Can it not be five to eight or, what is it, six, is it six thirty to nine thirty right now?
Six thirty to nine thirty.
It is six thirty to nine thirty. So, it's a three-hour window. Why not make it earlier? And that still gives them some sort of ability to play with what's going on and see what works. And it gives the neighbors some sort of reprieve from it going on so late when they have kids going to bed and listening to it in baby's bedrooms.
Until the public meeting.
Until, yes, until the public hearing.
So, we received advice from town council.
Mm-hmm.
And they note that the board ultimately, the board does ultimately decide to modify or otherwise act on the license
Right.
After a hearing.
Yes, right.
So, even to mod, even to modify the time limits, we have to have the hearing. That's how I read that. And I'll reach out to town administrator if he reads it the same way.
How did you read it? I did not read it that way.
Is it after the
Yeah, I did not read it that way. I thought to suspend or revoke, you needed to have a public hearing. To amend, a public hearing was not required, but
I'll quote it. Let me know what
Okay.
He reads that, however, in my opinion, the fact that the statute expressly allows the board to modify a license during the year after a hearing provides authority to add a condition on such a license. So, I, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but that was, that was the end of town council's recommendation for us.
The statute clearly does allow conditions to be placed on the license.
Right. It's so, when we had, when the license application was in, that was our opportunity to put conditions on it.
Correct.
And then, once we approved the license with conditions, now we can say that they violated said condition. Since we didn't put the specific condition in, they haven't violated something that we didn't act on when we gave the license. That's just my train of thought.
I think that, you know, it's, it's the due process argument is what you're, you're asking a question.
Sure.
The due process is the open hearing. And so, I think, you know, I know we had an emergency meeting last week on Thursday at five, and then, of course, this was a follow-up to see how the weekend went. And I think that's probably why the statute is written, that you have an open meeting and you have to give notice. And then at that point, you have the ability to revoke, amend it or modify it or further conditions. And I think, I think you do need to have that open hearing so all people are aware of it because it's a notice requirement.
And with an extensive set of orders of condition, you may want town council here.
So, there's another provision in, what was stated here. The board does have the authority to modify, suspend or revoke an entertainment license provided that the board schedules a hearing on it and gives the license at least ten calendar days written notice before conducting the hearing. So, that right there is a little wishy-washy.
Because of
Can we modify it?
Yes.
Providing that we gave them notice for ten days, or do we have to wait till the ten days? And I'm asking the question.
Yep, and some of these are friendly modifications. Sometimes the applicant meets you halfway and a modification works to hold a license. And sometimes you wind up in a situation where you schedule the public hearing and you have it up. And I think that's what Mr. Danahue is saying.
And I'm going to read one more piece. The licensing authorities may not modify, suspend or revoke such license unless they find that the public health, safety or order is stated in the preceding paragraph. I'm sorry. Taken, sorry, I'm going to start that over. I skipped a line. The licensing authorities may not modify, suspend or revoke such license unless they find that the license taken alone or in combination with other licensed activities on the premises has adversely affected the public health, safety or order as stated in the preceding paragraph, which refers to things such as noise as well. So, I just feel like we do have the ability to make changes, but it's a little gray area on suspending or revoking without a public hearing. That's why I think that it makes sense to make some sort of change, to offer some sort of reprieve while we wait for a public hearing and then give everybody the right to come in and speak. That's my take on it.
Do you think it would be a good idea to maybe step outside and speak to the owner and maybe discuss any kind of concessions?
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Flynn. I think, you know, seeing that Jason is here, I'd like to talk to him. The other thing is, because obviously, you know, it's a big, big question. I realize you have the obligation for a public hearing that you need, and so I'd appreciate that, you know. I'm not sure, are we the only one tonight or?
No, they have a lot of business.
I figured you do.
You could take an hour and they would still be here.
I figured. I've been there. I've been there a lot. We'd stop at eleven or eleven thirty, but then other members would say, no, let's go forward. I'm like, no, you can't get stuff done at that time.
Do you want, I mean, do you want to have time to go out and talk to Jason and then we'll carry on?
Yes.
Is that okay? I'd appreciate that, just for a few minutes.
As long as that's okay with everybody else.
Whatever time is that being
And then we'll, I mean, we have other things to do, of course, and then when it makes sense, we'll just kind of
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, board action items. Our first item is a board vote to consider the approval of Master and Law Chapter 138, subsection 14, special one-day liquor license for the Pembroke Foundation on September 18th, 2025, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the community center. Mr. Perry, I believe that's you.
Yes, me.
Do you want to tell us what you're looking to do?
We are, I am the chair of the Pembroke Foundation. We are a, Pembroke Foundation is dedicated to enriching the lives of Pembroke residents by supporting crucial town initiatives through strategic fundraising, which we strive to meet the evolving needs of our community and ensure a vibrant, sustainable future for all. What we are looking to do is put together a fundraiser at the community center, the Sip and Support. This is the event. You guys have, I'm sure have seen it on Facebook and whatnot. The Veterans Memorial Park in front of First Church, there was a project that was started several years ago that kind of fell by the wayside. We, as an organization, are looking to try to revitalize that. We have been welcomed by many, American Legion veterans, Veterans Asians, a few various select or townspeople, I should say. And we're looking to go ahead and have this fundraiser to get everything started. We're looking to get some seed money to go ahead and start generating funds for all this. So, we are looking for the one-day liquor license for the Sip and Support. We hope to see you all there. There'll be live entertainment. There will be obviously liquor, hence why the permit. There will be finger food supplied by Grill 110, and there will be auction items, live music and myself speaking. So, if you want to come see me and speak again, we'll be all there. But that is it. So, that is my request.
Yeah, and just to let the board know, because I'm on this, on the foundation myself, this is basically to make sure that we're the litmus test for what's going on with, when we passed the bylaw in April, I'm sorry, May, to see what we can do to have actually liquor within the community center. So, like I said, if we screw up, you know, we apologize to the town. But it's going to be a good event, and like I said, it's the financial arm to help out with other products in town. So, we help out Pembroke first.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Or if not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to grant the one-day liquor license request for the Pembroke Foundation for the sale of beer and wine alcohol beverages on September 18th, 2025, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the community center located at 128 Senate Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll see you there.
Thank you all very much for your time this evening. Everyone, take care.
You too. Next up, we have a board Next up, we have a board vote to sell or donate 300th Anniversary books as requested by the Pembroke Historical Society, which is a 501(c)(3), Ancient Trails to the 21st Century, 1712 to 2012, or Pembroke Chamber of Commerce. Do we want to, yes?
Go ahead. No, it's fine.
No, go ahead. Tell us what this is about.
No, no. So we, you recall, we talked about being able to do something with the books and so that the Historical Society could, could actually do that. The Chamber has stepped up to buy the books and then donate them to the Historical Society. So I think it's a, I think it's a solid plan for the town. It checks all the boxes for us, so I'm pleased that they have done that, so.
Excellent. Did anybody else, I know we talked about anybody else inquiring about them, but...
We have not.
I know Fraser is here from the Chamber. Did you want to come up and...
Not necessarily. Bill did a great job explaining what we're...
Just figured I'd check.
No, it's a symbolic 300. It's a dollar for every year. We were responding to Dan's suggestion of 100 bucks, and we tripled it. And we'd like to make that payment. We're not going to make it tonight because I know the treasurer's not here. But we'll send a check in and...
We take that memo.
Well, hold on. She's joking.
It's Sabrina Dotson.
I don't have access to the account. So that's, that's the plan. And I believe Scott is here to accept.
So you're going to get to accept?
My name is Scott Shannon, President of the Historical Society.
Well, this worked out swimmingly. I'm glad.
Are you going to hold back any books for new businesses that come to town? Or are you just going to whole lot?
We, we have talked about holding a parcel that we can donate to other folks.
Just an interested resident, not an official question.
Yeah, well, to you, they're for sale, 40 bucks.
I have one.
Okay. So that's, that's the plan.
And I just wanted to make certain, the only reason the municipality can sell something less than face value, value, is to go to an auction. But there are special provisions, and does Pembroke Chamber of Commerce meet those provisions?
Yes.
Well, it's an elegant solution then. That's a quote from you.
Thank you very much. Very good.
Well, then, do I have a motion, please?
I motion that the board vote to sell or donate 300th Anniversary books as requested by Pembroke Historical Society, Ancient Trails to the 21st Century, 1712 to 2012, or Pembroke Chamber of Commerce.
For $300.
For $300.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you.
That's my first motion.
What's that? Next up, vote recommendations, vote recommendations, actually. Do you mind if we jump forward? Why do I feel like we're missing something on this one? Did we not add the Bike-A-Thon? Am I not seeing it? No, I know, but I mean, is it on your... Where?
It's not. You're absolutely right. Would you just keep moving through? You've got a wedding and some liaisons if you wanted to take those.
Okay, then I'm just going to go through and tell you to... No, I knew it was added. I just, I wanted to make sure she didn't have to stay here all night. All right, so let's start with voting recommendations on... I'm going to jump over the town warrant first. Why don't we go to vote special events permit application request? RE private wedding at 89 Little's Ave, October 11, 2025. Sabrina, all the paperwork is complete here?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have anybody here to speak on this, right?
No.
And have the board...
I hope so. I truly do. For the most part, this board has, in the past, approved requests that come in for private events at private property, almost as an acknowledgement of the fact that we had two fights on town meeting floor that didn't work out well for the town when we said we should be more involved in special permitting. But it's a way to get a variance for on-street parking and noise violations. If I'm going to have something in my yard and it's going to be really loud and I'm going to have people parked, neighbors will call, people, things will happen. This way, Roll Call for the Police Department is informed of the event and the times. It heads off complaints coming in on the phone. It lets everyone in the public know about it. But for the most part, I've never really seen it debated to the point where it wouldn't be approved. So forgive me, we don't delve too deeply.
Well, our last wedding that we had.
Correct.
They did notify the About Us mixture.
Correct, correct.
And they were probably invited to the wedding, too.
May have been. This does not say, but I'm sure it'll be a lovely event. And to your point, we will get more information. This one came in typed. This is hand typed.
You did a beautiful job.
I know.
There is no further commentary. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Sophia Doyle to allow for live music in on-street parking at 89 Little's Ave on Saturday, October 11, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the purpose of hosting a backyard wedding, subject to the approval of Pembroke Police Chief.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have information on the Bike-A-Thon someplace that you can share?
I was going to run up and grab it by handwriting it. And I was hoping that Brittany would come up and talk to it so that I can capture it all for a vote.
You want to do that now?
There's not a lot of surprises to this one either.
I just, is the timeframe is fine with you, though?
It sure is. And it works, and by the way, the Police Department's done a beautiful job heading these off. And it's a late arriving fact that you guys vote the permits for the use of the town roadway. So it'll get smoother every time. It'll be more in the future as we go forward.
Okay. Hi, Brittany.
Hi, how are you?
Could you just identify yourself?
Brittany Dunn, I'm the President of the Bryantville PTO.
Thank you. And so what are we having?
So the goal is to have a Bike-A-Thon for all the students at Bryantville. They would be starting at Habimach Arena. Cut up Habimach and left down Mill, and then a left on the 36th back to Bryantville Elementary. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year, and it's a new board for the PTO as of last year. So we've been really working to try and get events in place that kind of bring all the students together. And we did do this last year. My sincere apologies, I didn't know that I needed to do this part of it. So I do apologize for that. But we did do it in the spring of last year, and it was a huge success. Lot of learnings, which is why we moved it from starting at Arrow to Habimach to get out of the center. But the kids loved it, and it is something that we would like to do every year moving forward. We have the ability to pull it away from Field Day, which is when we did it last year, which is why there's unfortunately two in this calendar year. But moving forward, it would just be every September. We had over 200 students sign up for it last year. Right now, we're hitting close to three. So it is a big hit with the kids, but I'd really appreciate your support.
What's the date for this again?
September 23rd.
And I'm writing this out, and I'm so sorry about that.
You're fine.
So they start at, meet at Habimach around 7:30. Students depart at 8:30. Everyone's to school before 9:00. It took them six minutes. It took them six minutes last year to ride from Arrow.
Really?
Yeah, it was very fast.
You already were in touch with the Police Department?
Yep.
And so you had to hire details?
Yep.
How many did you end up with?
Five details. I've got almost 40 volunteers.
Thank you.
Teacher, staff. We've got event T-shirts for all the students, so we know who's with the school, who's not. The DPW is going to give us a bunch of cones to block off all the little side streets and help with the traffic. In that sense, we've put a plan together with Greg Carr and the arena in terms of traffic flow and how we can make that as easy as possible. And then we pushed back the start time to 8:30 to account for the Habimach students, to make sure that they can all get to school on time and the buses aren't impacted.
So you guys meet at 7:30, is that what you said?
For starting to check in.
Oh, 7:30.
8:30, they depart Habimach.
And then you leave 8:30. Oh, gotcha. Perfect. Sounds fun. My bus will be nice and empty.
That's the goal.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? No? Do you want to pass, I'm going to give this to you so you can read the motion. Skip the times. What I scribbled on.
Well, we'll do the date, all the dates are in there, okay. Move to approve the use of the town's roads to host Bryantville PTO's Bike-A-Thon on September 23, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Habimach Street and Senate Street, subject to approval of Pembroke Police Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so I know, do I have to do Comeback every year?
Yes, yes. You bet.
Excellent.
Question.
Sure.
No, related specifically to this one, but to any road race. How does the, how is the public informed of the road race map? So they don't wake up on a Saturday, in this case, a Tuesday, get stuck in the traffic. This is for these folks.
For any, for any road race?
It's a very good question because the last, there was a Bike-A-Thon a while ago that caught the morning commute, and we had phones ringing forever.
Usually, the race company posts us a map.
But we've got used to South Shore Race Management. They don't host everything. Some are volunteers just hosting. So they don't do the full promotion to Dan's point.
So it's, it's our permit. So we should, as a town, be posting it on the town website.
Yep.
Or town Facebook, too.
And enable push notifications, so they'll be pushed out by email to people, whether they want it or not, just to keep the communication flow. Bill is nodding, yes.
Same as street closures, I would think.
Okay.
I'm going to jump to vote 25, 26, 2025, 2026 liaison roles, and then we'll go back to the warrants. I was just wondering if they would pop back in before. So we do have multiple liaison roles. Some of them are vacant. Obviously, it's always up for discussion, even if someone fills a position, if somebody else might be interested or want it. But I'm just going to read these out loud so we're all aware. Right now, our Select Board Liaison Rules are, School Committee is myself, Council on Aging Board is John, DPW Water Commissioner is Rich. There is, oh, we did have the Community Center Task Force, but it seems that we should be removing that since the committee is dissolved. Advisory Committee is vacant. Safety Committee/PMER is myself. Planning Board, Zoning Board is open, and Affordable Housing Committee is open. And then we have Regional State Representatives, Old Colony Planning Council, which is Becky Colletta. Select Board Initiatives is just Joint Board of Selectment School Committee Revenue Subcommittee, which is John and myself. And then we have one other that we discussed possibly removing, which is the Shared Water Resources Working Group. Regarding our current liaison roles, I would prefer to keep School Committee, if possible. Other than that, does anybody have anything that they are interested in or would like to leave? I wouldn't mind taking Advisory back. I had that once before, and I think it's important we have somebody on there. But other than that, I have no strong feelings. Does everybody who's on a committee, or I mean, on, in liaison, will want to keep what they already have?
I'd encourage Sean to get involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything that you're interested in that you would prefer to take?
Land use or advisory? Gentleman's choice.
What was the first one?
You said you wanted Advisory, right?
I'd like to take it back.
So I guess land use.
What was the, oh, planning, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, planning, zoning, and it's a peanut butter to the jelly of affordable housing.
So what you're suggesting is you take both?
It's, I was going to say, it's three meetings a month.
Okay.
You sure? It's a lot.
No.
The good news is, Planning Board and Zoning Board is televised.
Well, you think I like the NITV? Is that why you're telling me that?
You could stay home.
If you ever can't make it, you can listen. But affordable housing is an in-person meeting.
You would like both of those?
Or they could be split up. They don't have to go together. It's just that they so often do.
Sure. If they work together, then I'll take it.
Okay, so John, do you still want to stay on the Council on Aging Board?
Yep, my seniors suddenly love me. I don't know what's going on.
Suddenly, huh?
They came around, huh?
And Rich, you are DPW Water Commissioners. Did you want to remain on that?
Sure, I'll stay on that.
Okay. And then I'm still on PMA, which I'm perfectly fine to stay on. But if somebody else had some interest in it, I'd be happy to pass it off. I'll just stay on that then. And then, as long as everybody agrees, I would take Advisory, and then Sean would take Planning and Affordable Housing. Does that sound like a plan?
It's all good. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, that was easy. I feel like our list used to be so long. All right, well, we might as well move on then. We are going to back up to vote recommendations on complete articles in the fall special town warrant, Articles Number 3, 4, 5, and 7.
They are all pretty self-explanatory, but if you have any questions?
I'm, I'm just going to read them all out to begin with. Article 3 is to change the town clerk from elected role to appointed role. Article 4 is to amend the general bylaws, bylaws, Article Section, oh my gosh, Article 2, Section 2?
11.
11.
That's how dumb our bylaws are. I'm just kidding. They're amazing.
To allow the consent agenda to be removed from lottery and positioned as third item of business at future town meetings, eliminating the balls in, the balls out, confusion we have seen at prior town meetings. That's just a note. Article 5 is to amend the general bylaws, Article 3, Section 3, to allow the moderator to declare in vote qua, quantum?
Quantum.
Okay. Quantum, eliminating the need for the special motion at the start of every town meeting that allows him to do so. And Article 7 is to amend zoning bylaws, Section 2, and Section 4, RE the kennel bylaw, to address an act to increase kennel safety. Planning Board hearing for this is September, it was December 8.
They voted for it.
And they voted a favorable action recommendation. All right. So does anybody have, I mean, let's go through them one at a time, I guess. But Article 3, changing the town clerk from elected role to appointed role. Do we have any discussion or a motion?
Move favorable action. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Article 4, is there any discussion? This is, again, to amend the general bylaws, I probably should have just done this now, town meetings to remove consent calendar articles from lottery.
Move favorable action. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Article 5, to allow the mar...
Moderator.
Yep, there it is. Amend the general bylaws, Article 3, procedure at town meetings to declare two-thirds or four-fifths majority as provided in MGL, Chapter 39, subsection 15. Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And article seven, amend the Pembroke zoning bylaws, section two, definitions in section four, use and dimensional regulations regarding kennels.
No favorable action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any more to take action on, on the warrant? Yes.
You do, you have six more.
Right.
Yep. They're not ready.
Oh, they're not ready. That's the answer, thank you.
Oh heck no. If they were, they'd all be here.
Yep, got it.
All right, moving on to town manager's report. Bill?
So I just have one note for the board. I already talked about the aggregation. I wanted to inform the board that the all alcohol homeowner petition that we had put forward to the Commonwealth and the legislature last year died in committee. We have resubmitted and they will be taking up in this legislative session, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. So, and that's for two fifty-six church street. The other, the other applicant withdrew, so.
Thank you.
I had a question for the town manager. Bill, could you just give the board and the public a brief update on streets, roadwork, and other construction updates?
Sure. So we have a significant amount of work going on right now. We have water main work on Center Street in this section of the town from Little's to just down the street a little bit. It's not that far, but it's a significant section of water main. We have water main work on Oldham Street. We still have a couple of pieces on West Elm. We have significant paving work, which is going to be completed really quickly. That was the hot-in-place process on Pleasant Street ongoing. It's, it's remarkable how good that process is. I am very pleased, and I'm pleased that we don't have to grind and put a base coat down and then another coat down. It's, it's a significant savings to the town. We will have some small work going on, and I'll give you an update at the, at the next meeting because we're still working on finalizing some of those pieces. From a building construction standpoint, we have the two public safety buildings, one at Monroe and School Street, which is the fire substation, and one at Barker and Washington Street, which is the public safety headquarters. Both of those projects are in the ground and begun and all the permitting. We had a slight delay in the NEPTES permit for the, the pro- station down there as a result of the, what are they, the turtles, some kind of turtle. That's resolved, and the NEPTES has been approved and we're, we're moving forward with, with those. We have a significant number of water projects ongoing. We have the Swanburg redevelopment project, which is off of Pleasant Street. We've had some calls about that. It is a new well that will serve the town well. Sorry about that.
Quietly.
And we have the filtration plant in Planning, which is water stations two and three, which is actually a, quite close to the Bryantville Elementary School. That's still in Planning, will likely be bid next year, but we're moving forward with, with all of those.
What is the event for the public safety building?
So that-
There's two of them.
Next note. September twenty-ninth at four-thirty PM at the substation at Monroe and School Street.
Is it Monday?
It is a Monday.
Thank you.
And September twenty-ninth at six PM for the public safety headquarters, which is the corner of Barker and Washington.
Oh, so it's one to the other. I don't know, I was thinking it was two different days.
Yeah.
And that's open?
We thought it would be easy to do that. So we will be getting formal invites, elected officials and many appointed officials will be getting formal invites, our legislative delegation will also be getting formal invites, but it is open to the public. If you've never seen a groundbreaking ceremony before, I encourage it. It's not all that special, but it is kinda cool. It's a milestone. It is.
It's very special. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
I do not.
Do we have any liaison updates tonight? Old business? Bill, what's going on with Laggie at this point?
So we are in engineering. The engineerings are, we have the, the first plans. I should have talked about those too, because we got Laggie and the beach is also working. They're in engineering. We're likely going before our conservation commission in October. That's the tentative plan right now. Most of those plans are complete. And so we're pleased that we'll be filing the, the necessary stuff with conservation and Mass DEP, so because of our wetlands and all these locations, that we're, we're gonna be doing work. So you stand by, I'll actually, maybe your first meeting in October, I'll give you a big update on that and share the plans.
That would be amazing.
Yep.
And what were you gonna say about the beaches?
So the beaches, the same thing. They're all in engineering, all very close to being complete for the new boat ramps, some new dock space and some improvements to, to drainage.
Okay. So which beaches?
All of the town, all of the town beach areas except for, where don't we have a boat ramp? Stetson, right? There's no boat ramp at Stetson?
No.
Okay, so, so, yeah, well. So you've got town landing, there'll be a handicapped kayak section and a new boat ramp there, and some improvements to accessing the dock space. We have Stetson, which is just some improvements in access there. We have Little Sandy, which will have, you know, improvements docking, et cetera. And what's the fourth one?
Oldham.
Oldham. No, I said town landing. Oh, Furnace Pond. Furnace Pond. At the town beach on Furnace Pond, there's gonna be a new boat ramp and some improvements there also. So we are excited to finally move forward with these. They got delayed because of engineering, but now we're ready to roll and may, I would anticipate that every single one of these will be completed by the opening of next year.
And there's no plan to pave at Stetson Lot or anything like that?
We're talking about it, we're looking at funding at this point. The challenge is that if you pave it, you create a runoff to the pond. We're dealing, we're actually going, going out to bid on the work at Herring Run, but we have to use impervious pavement so that it, and so the, it's not in the plan, but we're looking at available budget to talk about that.
Okay. And speaking of ponds, I know we talked before, because you're on the bylaw committee, about some pond, possible bylaws with parking and whatnot.
I, I never read any formal complaints. So we, as a committee, did not, we could not address it.
All right. No, we'll talk about that one moving forward.
Yeah, I think we can potentially address that with a policy from the town manager or the select board also.
I just wanna make sure we revisit that. Do we have any community comment from the board? Any community comment from the public? Because I thought you had something you wanted to share about an event.
I can do, but we, we're gonna have a workforce forum event. That's what it's being promoted as, but VOTEC seems to have overtaken the portion of that event. So it's gonna be mainly about VOTEC. So we'll have an event on September the twenty-fifth at the library, six to eight. Tom Hickey is making two presentations.
Two?
Well, it'll be one, but it'll be, he has two presentations. We'll stitch it together. Erin is gonna be making her presentation. Bill, you're gonna, we've been talking about you saying a few words. There'll be other people on the panel to answer questions from the residents, but it's a, it's a, it's a forum to discuss VOTEC.
Is there anything else on for the, I know you said it's VOTEC, but there was other things too, or no?
We had tried to get other people to come in, but we couldn't fit, I mean, it'd be a five-hour event if we did everything that we wanted to do.
I just, I know I talked to you earlier today, so it's the only reason I was asking.
Yeah. So we'll probably host another roundtable forum, which will be a studio event, which will discuss all the other things that we felt were pertinent.
Sounds good.
So.
Do you have any other events coming up that you wanna share since you're here?
There is a Koopmans, is having a ribbon cutting in October.
Okay.
That's the new, well, it's not new, but it's the old Samson lumber.
I'm sorry? Oh, what is it?
Koopmans.
No, would you say that it was? The old one?
Samson lumber.
Oh, Samson lumber.
Samson lumber, yeah, on Maricay City.
Yep.
So they've become members of the chamber. And we weekly still record our podcast. I don't know if that's, I think you've been on it. We're excited to have anybody else on. We did, this week, we talked-
Andy, moderator.
Yeah, town meeting.
Dodge.
So we did a fifteen minutes of Stephen Dodge and, and Andy came on. So, yeah, that's, that's going well. We get about five and a half thousand hits on that per episode.
Nice.
So overall, we've had over thirty thousand hits to that series. We're in episode ten. I think you were episode six.
Not sure.
It was good fun, though.
It was fun.
So we should do it again. But that's it, that's-
Well, thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Where, did you wanna come back up and revisit? Okay. Rejoin us.
Thank you again. My name's John Danahue, and I represent Somewhere Else Tavern. Thank you for the time to go out and talk to Jason Cook. Just, just to let you know, Mr. Cook wanted to say, apologize. He was under the impression, the meeting was at seven-thirty, and I have to say, that's what I thought, and I came early. So that's why he's late. The second thing was, I asked him specifically, Mr. Flynn, about what happened. So Friday, there was some music, and the music was too loud. And Jason actually did pull the plug. He told him to turn it down, turn it down. He finally said, that's it, you're done. And so that's what happened on Friday night. With respect to the Saturday night, I asked him what had happened, and he, the music got fried because of the, I say got fried, whatever, electrical. So there was a, a small handheld. It wasn't a bullhorn, which I think somebody might have thought, but it was some kind of handheld that the band had that they were using. A mega, you know, like a-
Josh Krabs, didn't that one one?
Tiny one. I was thinking like a police bullhorn, one of the police- Okay, that's what I thought, but okay. So that's just one to at least make sure that Mr. Flynn understood what we're talking about. After talking to him, then our suggestion would be to the board, or would be like, how about if we reduce it by a half hour? Can we move it back from six to nine on Fridays and Saturdays? Bear in mind, we're not doing this the other days of the week. It's just the Fridays and Saturdays, and we ask, pending outcome of whatever your decision is with the open meeting, that's, we'd ask the board to, to entertain during that time period.
Does anyone have any input on this? A strong feeling?
Essentially what you, you were suggesting earlier, right?
Yes, later than I suggested, but yes, moving the time was my suggestion. I, I would be more comfortable with a little bit earlier than that. I would still would have said five to eight, or five-thirty to eight-thirty.
I would only submit, at that point, then what's the point? I mean, it's a Friday evening, people get done work, they're gonna come to the Somewhere Else Tavern, it's outdoor music, it's a limited time, it's gonna be ending, if, if we were successful in convincing people, it's gonna end at the end of October, and Saturday. I understand that there's a one-year-old and a two-year-old next door. Again, I'd only submit, they're in a business district, we are trying to be cooperative. And as much as I know that you've heard things, I wanna make sure that that was unilateral pulling the plug. It wasn't because of complaints that were made. He overheard, he said it was too much, he pulled the plug. So there's, we're trying to do the same thing on our end. So that's why I would submit to, if you're gonna put it back from five to eight, then it's, might as well not do it at all. What's the point of it?
And the time would change only until the public hearing, when we revisit it as well. So we would still have, at least I would think, we would, I think we should still have a public hearing.
That's fine.
Regardless, of course.
That was the reason for, for requesting. You'd asked if we'd consider reducing it, and that's the point. Yeah, so we understood that. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna ask to maintain it, and I'll have an opportunity to hear what the arguments are from the neighbor and anybody else.
Yep.
Because like I said, I, I wasn't aware of what had happened afterwards, now I am, and I wanna find out, get the police report, go over it and find out. But I, I do appreciate your consideration if that were the case.
I personally still think that nine is pretty late. I think a couple of weeks doing it earlier would, is pretty reasonable. While things get figured out, and it still gives time to figure out the sound issue, and gives the residents some break for a couple of weeks while this gets worked out. That's my opinion anyhow.
So, I look at it this way, that when, when we were reviewing what the town council's recommendation was, it was, was not clear and on its face that we could change the hours without having the hearing. So this is a way to reduce hours without it being challenged. If we reduced it to eight, we would have to defend that possibility. We'd have to defend that position using town council. This way, we reduce the hour somewhat with the permission, with, with the acceptance of, of the owners, and we still get a little clawback on our end. And I suggest also that we have the hearing, and definitely schedule the hearing for ten days, and if there, then we can, we, we have covered all the bases according to Mass General laws, without having the conditions explicit in the, in the license. So I think it's, I, I think this is a compromise. It's not everything you wanted with the hours, but it, it protects the town from what could be a defensible, defensible action. And that way, when we go into the public hearing in ten days, we'll have clean hands, we can have an open and honest conversation, without having to defend ourselves.
And still more data is coming back because they still have the music going on. So if it is something that is unbearable, then we shut it down.
And I just like that, that, I, I, I'm okay with, with nine o'clock as long as, and I don't think it really needs to be said, but I want it on record, that we still, gotta stay on top of it, as far as the ball, like you, like you were. But you gotta stay on top of it. Not just saying nine o'clock's and now all hell breaks loose, you know?
No, I, I-
I know, I just wanted it on record, that's all I'm saying.
And, yeah, that's fine. I, I don't wanna, I, we, we understand, we hear you. We do.
Any thoughts, Rich?
I think it's fair. I think it's a good opportunity for the cooks to come back in here and show that they did give concessions, and they're continuing to keep the music down, so I guess it's gonna be on them from now until then.
And you can schedule or establish that there will be monitoring so that regardless of who said what, you can have a town-
Well, of course, I would have to continue.
You can have somebody from the town looking at it in the intro, so that it's not down to a phone call from someone.
Of course.
So, Barbara, greater discussion of outdoor entertainment, if, this board has voted to allow outdoor entertainment with a special permit. We need to, for the next ones coming up, we need to make sure that we put conditions on it that are enforceable. We also need the Pembroke Police Department to purchase a, a proper decibel reader, so that we have our own. Because if, whether it's one establishment, two, or ten, we need to have our police department or building enforcement officer to have the proper equipment.
Did you have something, Lee, do you wanna come up?
Lee Flashman, School Street, nearby resident. I actually am speaking just to give facts. I'm not trying to make any changes to what is being discussed, but business A, in the zoning bylaws states-
Excuse me, but I can't really hear you, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
Okay, yeah, happy to. In the zoning bylaws for business A, it states uses permitted by special permit. And I just wanna make sure that you understand the language in here. That's it. The following uses may be permitted only when the applicant clearly establishes such that uses are not noisy, injurious, noxious, or offensive to the neighborhood, and do not derogate from the purpose of this bylaw as determined by the Board of Appeals after due notice in a public hearing as per section four. And it continues there. I've just, there, there's been talk about business A, and that somehow it doesn't matter about the residences. The bylaws, the zoning bylaws does say it matters. That's it, thank you.
And to Dan's point earlier, the zoning decision contained conditions of its own, as did the site plan approval from the planning board that contained conditions of its own. But everybody looked at each other and said, but we don't do entertainment. So we're gonna need to branch out and create a whole new matrix for it.
So just to answer this gentleman's observation, so the use is already existing, it's a restaurant use. It's been year for years, and I have not done the research. I know I have a zoning opinion, I'll read it and provide it if you want it, but usually that means by special permission, at some point in time, the restaurant was granted and allowed. The outdoor entertainment is a function of music, and that's where your licensure comes into play. So annually, you, anybody who wants outdoor entertainment, whether it's for one-day entertainment, for weddings or something like this, or in this case, for a, a seasonal component, then you get a permit for it. So, and, and anybody who has music outside, private or public, you gotta get it for any party or, or thing. And that's what they did, they came before you on that. What he's mentioning is, during that permitting process, when you are going to allow the use in that district, in this case, the business district, you gotta get a special permit, and is that use, being the restaurant, noxious? Could it be noisy, all these things? all these things, and that's what, that's what that references to. They've got their special permit, it's already in use. The question is the entertainment use, which is what you license annually, because you can revoke it. One year you like it, next year you don't. That's why they're annually. So, that's what we're under, and I know that, you know, that also popped up on, on Pembroke United, but I just wanna make sure that people get information, they understand the use of it, and they don't spread misinformation, 'cause that's gonna make the hearing much messier, but, uh, so that's what I wanted to share with you.
Thank you.
So, if you take a motion?
I will.
Uh, I'll, I'll make two, just to keep it separate.
Okay.
I make a motion to, uh, at the suggestion of the owners, to change the hours of entertain- outdoor live entertainment from five to nine.
Sixty.
Uh, sixty, four, uh, I mean, sixty. Sixty-nine.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm a no, I'm not comfortable with the time.
Do we need a motion on that? I mean, I, I think it's just more of a concession on their behalf and acknowledged by the board.
Yeah, but that's a formal acknowledgement, you are now of a formal vote, voting.
Yep, we do.
They, they explicitly said that they would not challenge us if we changed the time. If we changed the time to eight o'clock, there would, even eight-thirty-
I was wondering if the procedure would-
They intimated that they might challenge that, well, they, there was a pushback.
Okay. Do you wanna make a motion for a, um, public hearing?
I do. I make a motion that, uh, within the, the proper ten days' notice period, um, an open meeting, a, a public meeting would be held regarding, uh, the outdoor entertainment license, and any relative action coming from that.
There's a motion there, too.
Oh, sorry, I'll read that.
I was pointing, I'm sorry.
Uh-
Vote to schedule.